Krista?
Yeah?
Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Yes, you're all right?
No, you get real confident. Do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One change to the agenda on new business items C, we are changing the, we're setting the time to be 7:25 instead of 7:20, we're doing item B at 7:20. So that's the only change I have to the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda? Second. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the September 8th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
There's somebody in the audience.
You wanted to discuss the minutes from September 8th?
If that's permissible.
What's that?
Is that permissible?
We haven't voted yet, so yes.
Okay.
I just needed to speak into the microphone.
My name is Lindsey Anderson, I'm from here in Hot Springs.
Maybe a little louder.
Okay. I have concern with the completeness and correctness of the minutes, specifically under new business in the fifth paragraph.
Can you hear that out there?
Toward the middle of the fifth paragraph under new business in the minutes.
Okay.
There is a motion to change the rates at Evans Plunge that was made by Schwartz and second advice Malane, and then there was discussion. Following some discussion, Tim Tesher moved to table that motion, actually seconded that motion, and at that point, the mayor said that she felt that we needed to vote on the initial motion and was going to call for a vote on that motion.
Because the table failed, right?
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Then Georgia Holmes wanted to have some more discussion, so there was more discussion, after which Deanne McColl asked that her second to the original motion be rescinded, but that was incorrect because Spillane had actually seconded it according to manager Schroeder. At that point, Ashley asked for a roll call vote, the mayor called upon the finance officer to read the roll, a vote was taken on the original motion, the motion to table which was seconded was never voted on and was rejected and ignored by the entire council. I think we need to address this issue, and I think it's time we paid more attention to those kinds of things, we just can't operate this way. Thank you.
Any other discussion on that?
Thank you, Lindsey, I knew there was a mistake made and I did not speak up, and Misty said the same thing.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Current claims?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I was not notified of any communications from the public, so if there's someone that had an item, please come up to the mic. State your name.
My name is Steve DeBoer, and I do the weed spray and fertilizer here in town.
I need you to move closer to the mic, sir.
I am Steve DeBoer, and I do the weed spray and fertilizer on the lawns in town. I've got a problem with that, though, because I was told that the city's going to hire their own weed sprayer after we cleaned up the poison, emlock, and all the rest of weeds around town, which are coming back again, by the way. But I'd like to know what's really going on, because we're not going to do part of it and let somebody else do the other part. We either do it all or we do none. I've been doing this for 15 years, and I know what I'm doing, and I'd just like to know what's happening, or if you already hired somebody. So I think it's an underhanded thing.
There's been no decision for that.
I'll address this. Steve, I think we spoke on the phone regarding this matter, and it was agreed that you'd be our contracted employee through the rest of the season to provide weed spraying services, and then in 2016, through the budgeting process, it was recommended the city look to hire somebody internally to manage the vegetation, so it's a matter of what works best for our budget in 2016.
Well, it works best for mine if I don't get it all, and if I do get it, I want at least a two-year contract, because you guys are going back and forth and back and forth. Kim Long came in, and I don't know how it happened to them, but they got threw out, and then I was called to come in and take care of the problem, the weeds and stuff, which we did, and it was an unusual year, there were just weeds all over, every place, everybody's, all these ranches too, and we have to handle that, and that was an unusual year. Normal years, we could handle that easily, done this town three or four times to keep everything just copacetic, but now it seems like I'm being undercut.
Well, again, no decisions have been made for 2016 as of yet, the council does advise me to look at what alternative.
2015's over with, as far as that, so I'm just saying, I want to know what's going on.
Okay, well, that's not the best answer I can give you, the council asked me to look into doing something different with our weed spraying in 2016, that's not to say the job we performed for us this year hasn't been satisfactory, it certainly has been, talking with my department heads.
Well, so I was wondering, did we do something wrong, or did we not kill enough weeds?
My impression is that it's a cost-saving measure if we could do this service in-house, the council asked I to look into it, no decisions have been made, any bills we, or any future contract obligations we enter into have to be approved by the council, any expenditures we make also has to be approved by the council, there's been no decision yet for 2016.
When did this begun, like after the first year or something?
That'd be a question for the council, I'd have difficulty answering it. We'd ideally like to have somebody in place prior to the weed growing season, so we'd be looking at March to get somebody in that position to hit the ground running when the weather starts permitting weed application.
Would there be Public Works? Carol, into your room, please.
I asked Nolan which committee that would be, and he said Parks.
Thanks. Any other communications from the public? All right, we'll go to personnel, if nobody opposes, I'd like to put them all together.
Make a motion to approve A through E under Personnel.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, motion carried. Committee reports, Carl for the last time, or at least for the next foreseeable future, right? Administrative and Finance report.
We met at 1 o'clock at City Hall on Monday, September 14th, we discussed the AFO introduction, policies in Finance Office, and hiring Karen Bengley, is that correct?
Yes.
We also discussed a travel request from the Chief of Police, Mr. Close, to go to Colorado for some advanced training for the chief. We also discussed travel requests from the Finance Office for, I believe that's for Misty and Karen, is that correct?
That was the intention, yes, Karen, however, has prior obligations at that time, so she'll be on vacation or living the absence, so Misty will be attending training instead by herself.
We also discussed the Hot Springs blanket donation policy, which we didn't really get into too much discussion on, and we didn't make any recommendation with regard to it. We discussed the 2016 SHGC rates, Southern Hills Golf Course rates, and promotional promotions information, that'll be taken up by the Greens Committee or the Golf Course Committee and brought back to the city at a later date. Proposed revision of water and wastewater rates information, and amendments to water and wastewater ordinances were discussed, and no recommendation came forward. We discussed the RFP for the solid waste contract information, and it will be going out? Or is it currently out?
That's the last of the agenda.
It's on the agenda, if it's approved, it will go out.
Proposed resolution to establish three top-scale salaries, and I believe we made a, did we come to a conclusion on that?
The next Admin Finance Committee will have recommendations to bring to that committee to review.
Okay. And then we also created a library clerk assistant to the director position for the library, and that's all we discussed.
All right, thank you, Carl, it was a good meeting. And the reason I was saying possibly for the last time is Georgia will be taking over as the chair of Admin and Finance going forward. All right, Georgia, Airport Advisory Committee, you haven't met yet, right?
No, but we did meet with Flight Flight, and we did visit with them, because they're proposing different options here with the ambulance, and they wanted to bring some proposals to the Airport Advisory Committee, so that was about what we discussed.
And we have the meeting on the 29th?
Yeah, the 29th.
All right, Deanne, Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, had a meeting September 16th with agriculture, the Ag Appreciation Dinner is scheduled for November 7th, 8, excuse me, 5 to 6 for social hour, 6 to 7 a dinner, 7th Grade Conservation Field Day at Whitney Reserve will be October 1st, the Pioneer Fall Festival will be held in conjunction with the Ag Expo on October 10th, and the Pioneer Museum. Also discussed was tourism, the vacation guide for South Dakota, whether we will participate, which we will, and also we viewed a video put together by Traveler Magazine, and it got mixed reviews. Southern Hills Wedding Fowl Renewal Update, Lucy and the Green Wolf Store here in Hot Springs will be participating, Mickelson Trail Trek, September 18th, Badger Clark with Rick Kahn doing decor, that's September 25th and 26th, I believe it's on the Marquee out front. Let's see, we discussed extended hours at Cascade Falls, and that was voted down, the chamber was asked to make supplies available to different parties for cleaning and so forth. Let's see, and there was a vote to move accounts from Wells Fargo to First Interstate, and discussed also was a solar car race on August 6 during the rally time at Mueller Center, including awards. And that's all I have on that.
Just go into Fall River Regional Waste Management, Custard Fall River Regional Waste Management District.
September 10th at 6:45 in Edgemont at the landfill, we had a meeting, Dave Morgan retired from the board, we discussed a purchase of a four-wheeler for the landfill to make getting around to different sites easier, and there was a vote to purchase and a financial cap on that at $8,000. There was a presentation from the insurance company, SDPAA, a discussion from the barkers stating they had repairs to tires due to nails, and also it was reported that money income has been lost due to lack of contaminated oil-filled waste entering the landfill, and then it was stated that that will start occurring very soon. With that, I have to bring up, we did have a referendum that was voted on, and that was a year and a quarter ago regarding a contaminated land farm, and the votes have been sealed, your votes have not been counted, this has been a year and three months, there was an injunction filed against these votes, and a judge locally ruled in favor of keeping them sealed. On October 7th, well, let me back up, Jim Sword had filed with the Supreme Court that the votes be counted, so there will be a hearing on October 7th in Vermillion in front of the law school, South Dakota State, and they will have the final determination on that. This water is very important, I have to add that, I encourage you all to view a movie on YouTube, takes two hours, if you don't have a computer at home, you can view it at the library, I've made arrangements with the librarians to let whoever wants to view it, view it for the two-hour period, but it's titled Blue Gold, and after that, you will have an appreciation of what we have. Also, I'd like to add too, that recently, can't tell you what it was, but it was in the Journal, Rapid City Journal, but it's also in the Huffington Post, and if you go to a website, Huffington Post, and click on Wind Cave, it's a very interesting site, we have very special water, in fact, there are underground lakes that are the top of the Madison water, and in these lakes are contained bacteria, and these bacteria have the possibility of replacing antibiotics, so I think this is something we really need to protect.
Thank you, Deanne.
I have a question, Deanne?
Yes.
Who filed to stop the count of a referendum that was legally done in this county?
Ken Barker, with the Barker.
And they run Whiteville Forest?
Yes.
Under contract?
Yes.
Well, I find it very compelling to say that I don't think we need any oil waste going into our landfill, it's going to contaminate the water one way or another, it leaches in. You can find out about it by looking at these movies and these reports by the Huffington Post, find out how important our water is to us here, anybody that wants to take advantage of trying to destroy what we have need to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Where are you doing?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission?
No.
Okay. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Karen Vega?
We met on Monday night, Nolan, Chris, the facility director, myself, with the swim team, Representative Misty Brand, she's been a coach, head coach with swim team now for nine years, Stacy and Roger were also there.
Do you guys need to repeat on that?
Just see if it's on.
There you go. Okay, so anyway, we met for Monday night, I'll just give you a briefing of that again, with the swim team, they had Misty Brand, she's been head coach for nine years, Stacy and Roger were also there, Nolan, myself, and Chris, the facility director of Evans Plunge, and we discussed accommodating the swim team Monday through Thursday, their regular practice hours between 4:30 and 6:30, no matter what, if we do close, that is up to recommendation tonight for a vote, we would let them in to swim, so there would be no interruption with that. Thursday night, we met here in the side room, we had 22 people in attendance, and we discussed, Nolan gave an excellent presentation, slideshow, talking about the finances of Evans Plunge since we bought it, and his 15-minute presentation turned into over an hour, and we opened it up for discussion, we were talking for probably a little over two hours. There were several people in the room, there were a lot of really good recommendations, really good discussions, everybody's concerns were heard, the advisory committee felt like we needed to look at our numbers again, so we met on Friday morning from 9 to 11:15 or so, and we went back over the hours, we talked about everybody's input, and we went back over the rates, and all of that is going to be presented tonight for vote, so that will be brought up, I don't want to be redundant.
All right, thank you, Karen, it's been a fun week for you, I know, appreciate all your work. Krista, do you have an update for the parks?
Thank you, but Nolan, Nolan, you know, he has all the information, and he gives it to him to get it, and me, because he just go into the park.
He looks?
Barbier, Barbier, he's going to do the culture.
Good.
Did you say Kim Barbier?
No.
Okay, she's.
She's going to report on the culture for me, and Nolan is going to go with the test with.
Okay, we'll let, okay, Nolan will cover for the parks, Kim is not here, because her items were removed from the agenda, but she can speak next time if need be, or if you can just bring us on to speed in a couple weeks. But Nolan, if you could talk about the parks?
Sure, yeah, for the parks, right now, we have installed new lights up at Butler Park, so there's more security lights overhead there, you can see by the baseball fields, there's more light, we're going to extend that to this skate park as well, to just increase the security of that area. We also are working down by Brookside right now, the South Dakota One Call has been made to begin installing the sidewalk perimeter around the new equipment, I see Wes in the audience tonight, we have, I believe, one more piece of equipment to install, and then after that, we can go ahead and order with the sidewalk to begin that side of completion. After the sidewalk's installed, our long-term plan is to do a sprinkler system and a native grass in that area as well, so it's returned to an attractive state. The RTP grant, that's the recreational trails program grant, that we've been awarded through the state of South Dakota, is actually a federally funded grant, and so we're still going through the environmental and site analysis right now, may dissipate, our side or our work to begin in November and December, and that will address the undercutting of the river with the Freedom Trail, as well as help us upgrade the park benches along the length of the trail, so right now, we are also collecting proposals following our procurement policy to get estimates on roughly 15 park benches, they'd be a composite low-maintenance material. In terms of parks, I think that's, I'd like to wrap it up at the night.
Okay, great, thank you, Nolan.
Thank you.
Yeah. Again, Kim is not here for planning zoning, she'll report on that next time. Public Safety, Tim?
We met on the 16th of September, we discussed the school for the Chief of Police, we also discussed signs, traffic signs and pedestrian signs, as my understanding, U-turn signs have been ordered and changed so we can put them on hold, right? For a couple of gentlemen in the audience, it's taken us a lot of years.
The correct size, words.
Correct size. We're also going to get, since school started by all our crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk signs have been moved up by the school, we're going to look into getting some more so we can put them back downtown. We discussed some of our nuisance areas, and there's been some plans discussed, not any real things have been made, decisions have been made on helping some of these people clean up their yards, and there was a problematic Chautauqua park, which has since been eliminated. That was the end of that.
Public Works?
Public Works, again, we're talking about, our solid waste contract is up the end of the year, so we're looking at, we're discussing some rules on that, water projects, on University, they're in the process, they've pretty much got all the water lines put in there, and now they're working on the streets, the Albany project is continuing, we discussed curb and gutter on University Avenue up by, up on Fourth and Fifth Street, again, at Public Works, we also discussed traffic signs, there was a, we okayed an easement for the telephone to go across Butler Park, and we discussed that, we need to make sure that there's one of our people there when they do this, so that they have our parks plan as involved, so that they're not burying cable where we've already got other stuff done, and that was it.
All right, thank you, Tim. Georgia, Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee?
The new committee actually met September 9th and went over prices, and I asked Nolan if he would give input if there was anything else on that.
Just that, unlike Georgia says, September 9th, the Golf Course Advisory Committee didn't need to review prices, Jason, the secretary of the committee, put forward a recommendation with my help, and we received feedback from that group, the next step is to take those considerations, reevaluate them, and then go back to that committee with the alterations made.
We discussed the school for the Chief of Police. We also discussed signs, traffic signs and pedestrian signs. As my understanding, U-turn signs have been ordered and changed so we can put them on the pole, right? For a couple of gentlemen in the audience, it takes a lot of years.
The correct size, words.
Correct size. We're also going to get, since school started by all our crosswalk, pedestrian crosswalk signs have been moved up by the school, we're going to look into getting some more so we can put them back downtown. We discussed some of our nuisance areas, and there's been some plans discussed, not any real things have been made, decisions have been made on helping some of these people clean up their yards. And there was a problem on Chautauqua Park, which has since been eliminated. That was the end of that one.
Okay, Public Works?
Public Works, again, we're talking about, our solid waste contract is up the end of the year, so we're looking at, discussing some rules on that. Water projects, on University, they're in the process, they've pretty much got all the water lines put in there, and now they're working on the streets. The Albany project is continuing. We discussed curb and gutter on University Avenue up by, up on Fourth and Fifth Street. Again, on Public Works, we also discussed traffic signs. There was a, we okayed an easement for the telephone to go across Butler Park, and we discussed that. We need to make sure that there's one of our people there when they do this, so that they have our parks plan as involved, so that they're not burying cable where we've already got other stuff done. And that was it.
All right, thank you, Tim. Georgia, Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee?
The new committee actually met September 9th and went over prices, and I asked Nolan if he would give input if there was anything else on that.
Just that, unlike Georgia says, September 9th, the Golf Course Advisory Committee didn't need to review prices. Jason, the secretary of the committee, put forward a recommendation with my help, and we received feedback from that group. The next step is to take those considerations, reevaluate them, and then go back to that committee with the alterations made. Once we have this recommendation from that committee, it'll come through the council for final approval. Our ultimate goal is to have our rates established before January 1st, that way we can be ready to hit the ground running once golf season arrives in 2016.
I have one thing I wanted to mention. On the airport, we did have 30 planes that came in for the fly-in, and over 60 people showed for that, so it was very well-attended and really interesting. I think it was a great event for our city.
Thanks for that. All right, ordinances. Item A, second reading, so the real one, of Ordinance 1158, 2016 Appropriation Ordinance.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item B, second reading of Ordinance 1160, supplemental appropriation ordinance, water and sewer.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Secretary? I think Diane beat you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Resolution 2015-38, resolution to change rates of cemetery grave lots. The information's in your packet. I'll make that motion. Georgia, second. Any discussion?
Kara, I care.
Oppose, Kara, I'm sorry.
Just one comment, this isn't going to affect any prior sales, is it?
No, Lori even suggested buying now, before, last week. So no, prior sales will, you know, stand as sold, this is going forward if this is approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Just to confirm, Krista was...
Krista, you were, you were fine with the rate.
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you. I'll count to three. Old Business, discussion and possible motion to change Evans Plunge operating hours. As recommended by the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, that information is available in your packets as well.
Can we find out what the recommendation is? Nobody out here knows yet.
Don't we need a motion first? I do. I need a motion to discuss it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, now we can discuss it.
So the reg...
Sure, it's your baby.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, after we heard everybody's comments, and we revisited that on Friday morning, went back through, this is the hours, went back through the hours, and we're making, the advisory committee is making a recommendation that we close just one day a week on Tuesday. So we'll be open the other day, Sunday, 12 to 6, Monday, 6 to 8, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, 6 to 8, and Saturday, 10 to 8. We're also extending the hours, we're recommending to extend the hours from May 1 through September 30th for the on-season.
And we're also going to allow swim team on Tuesdays still.
So Monday through Thursday, swim team will go from 4:30 to 6:30. Either Chris or Rod will go ahead and let them in, so no concessions will be open, but just the swim team only, so they can continue to practice.
Can you come to the mic if you need to?
Got a few questions.
Kara, did you want to mention the fact that your, it's not starting until October 1st?
Yeah, yeah. It would be, the recommendation would be May 1 through September 30th would be the on-season, so the off-season would be October 1st through, and then following, April 30th the next year would be the on-season.
Hi, my name's Chris Benau. Three short things. The first is what's going to happen to the classes on Tuesday, like the spinning class, because my sister-in-law is the spin instructor, so I was curious if you guys are going to accommodate the spinners over there?
That's something that, Chris, we'll go, the facility director will go through the scheduling, and I'm sure we'll address that.
And then, like I said before, if you guys need my help on Tuesday nights, to watch the swim team, I'd be more than offered, offering to do that for free.
Thank you very much.
And then, another quick thing, it's not with the Evans Plunge, I'd like you guys to consider...
We need to stick to the topic, so is it associated with rates with Evans Plunge? Operating hours, I'm sorry, operating hours?
No, I have something to do, well, I'll come and talk to you, like, tomorrow.
Okay, okay. I just have to stick to the agenda, okay? Thank you. So any other discussion on the proposed Evans Plunge operating hours?
I'm happy to say that I'm pleased with what was done by the committee in reviewing all of this and coming back with extending the summertime to the October 1st, number one, and that we only close one day a week rather than two. It is going to be somewhat of a savings, and it'll be helpful for the plunge.
I want to express my appreciation too. I know it was a lot of work, and I appreciate your accommodations and working with everybody.
Thank you, Kara.
I also want to piggyback on that. I thank you, Kara, and I met with Chris, and they explained everything to me, and I think they've done a great job, and thank you guys. Tell her thank you as well.
Thanks, Andrea. We have a comment out here. Jeannie?
Jeannie Montgomery, Hot Springs. I really think the compromising, you're showing everybody's compromising, I appreciate that from the public. The second thing is, is that, just from our perspective as the motel cabin, La Cabin owners, we see people our age or older coming still in October, and that this is the time the kids stay home, you know, or in school, so we see a lot of population, like, you may do, Kara, you know, see that our older population are still, especially through the Buffalo Roundup. So the longer that season can be out there, I think the more use you're going to have with that pool. And we do get people asking about it. The second thing, back with Harley, we asked them about using a 25% coupon to...
We need to stick to the operating hours?
I am, I am. This is a point. The 25% coupon really has been successful through the motel. People see that, we put it on the web, we, we have a sign.
We're not to rates yet, we're still with operating hours?
We're going to go to rates right after this.
I have to stick to the agenda.
Thank you.
As you see, I have people watching every...
All right, thank you. So I thought it was part of it because of the... All right, okay, I'll come back.
Can you tell us how much of the savings, the operating hours, if I only closing one day?
Over $16,000. Nolan, you've got the exact figure?
Yeah, upwards of $15,000 from that closure.
Okay, that brings me to my second point. I heard this, this last week, and it was a different perspective, and it might have to do with rates, but this is kind of, I don't know, you'll have to tell me. Okay, the, the figures you gave us last couple weeks, Nolan, looked bleak, and, oh my...
306 does look bleak. It does account, though, for capital improvements as part of it through the loan fund.
But when you hear it the other way, that the goal the city set when buying the plunge is at a high percent meeting them figures, to me, that is an extremely positive way of looking at this, and maybe you could go into that a little more when we get to rates.
Okay. Thank you for your patience with that. If there is no other discussion, I will take a vote on the proposed operating hours for Evans Plunge. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Now, Old Business, discussion and possible motion to change Evans Plunge rates. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Again, I have to commend the committee and Kara for going back over all of these different rates, and especially looking at the Evans Plunge passes for a single couple and family and bringing them down, and really think that did a good thing for setting a better rate. And I think personally for more locals to be able to use it. Thank you, Kara.
All right, Jeannie.
All right, thank you. Okay. The, what we have observed from our small motel is that once people see that sign, we have it posted two different places, they go. They are very interested in gathering up their kids and going, to the point we lose towels, okay? That's a joke, but, you know, that 25% coupon really gets them more involved in attending. We have seen a starking notice of more people coming in, picking that up and going.
This is the, for those who don't know, the Stay Play kind of getaway, so if they stay at a local hotel, they can get a 25% off discount to Evans Plunge.
Thank you. It's always nice to know what marketing strategies work, so we appreciate your feedback.
I have one question, and that was, there is no date when this is to begin.
Because it's a motion to begin effective immediately.
The rates.
Assuming tomorrow's immediately, that's...
We close at 8, so, or 9. Yes, now? Okay. Did you get your answer, Georgia? Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Want to say one more thing I forgot to add earlier?
Well, the motion carried for vote.
So I just wanted to mention, the 125th was Saturday, and I forgot to mention that. That's a pretty big deal. And I had an older gentleman come in the front door with his son, and I thought he was coming to the birthday party. And he was from Sacramento, California, and he goes, "No, I'm just coming here because I like this place." And he came here in 1938 for the first time, and he's been coming back for years. And I just, there was another man that came there 70 years ago that they got their picture taken, but I just want to thank everybody for their passion with Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, their water. It's benefited so many people's lives, and I'm happy to be part of keeping it open and hopefully changing damage for the better.
Thank you, Kara. I know it was a tough week, really appreciate it. And we really did have a good birthday party there on Saturday, so thanks to everybody who helped make that happen as well. Cake was good. New business, motion to set a public hearing for temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Boys and Girls Club of the Black Hills on the 10th of October, or, I'm sorry, the 5th of October, and then the hearing would be at 7:10 p.m. Oh, okay, the hearing until the 5th, I really... For the Wine and Race Event on the 14th of November at the Miller Center. So we're just setting the hearing.
Right, I'll make a motion.
Okay. In discussion. All right, we'll set that hearing. Motion carried. Oh, I'm sorry. I, let's vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You didn't oppose it, right, Krista? I didn't wait my three seconds.
I don't have a minute.
Thank you, okay. Motion carried. Motion carried, again. New business, item B, motion to set a public hearing for temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Mammoth Site on the 5th of October at 7:20 p.m. for an event on the 17th of October, the Paint and Sip fundraiser at the Mammoth Site.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item C, which is the one we changed the time to 7:25.
Excuse me. To be, they paint, but your ordinance used to be that it took 30 days for your temporary alcoholic beverage license. You are actually short on that to Mammoth Site.
I'm not sure.
Unless something changed.
Where are the ordinance as a state, 30 days?
It's set on the license application we posted.
I think it's a courtesy request, they provide to City Hall 30 days in advance. It's not an ordinance that governs the direction of the council, it's a courtesy to the council.
It was actually on the forms in the past, it was brought up at the Council meeting before.
Yeah, again, there would be a courtesy.
Unless that's been a behind-the-scenes change since then, is that...
No, just to clarify, it wouldn't be an ordinance to be a violation of, it's a courtesy to the council to give them that much time. And I assure you, if we change any ordinance as we go through the process of doing so with the two hearings, allowing the, the two readings, allowing the proper chances. But it's not an ordinance, though.
We're just setting the hearing tonight?
Thank you, though, for the comment, I do appreciate it.
Item C, motion to set a public hearing for Ordinance 1156, mobile home ordinance revision on October 5th at 7:25 p.m.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to set a public hearing for Ordinance 1157, Chapter 27, accessory apartment amendment on the 5th of October at 7:30 p.m.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to create the full-time position of library clerk slash assistant to the library director with a top of scale of $14.33.
I'll make that motion, it comes from the Assembly Committee.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, subsequent motion to item C, appointment of Amy Lee Caffey to new position at 86% top of scale, effective immediately.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item G, motion to approve travel request from finance officer to attend the 1118-2015 election workshop in Rapid City sponsored by the South Dakota Municipal League.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to approve travel requests for Chief of Police to attend 22216 Supervisor Leadership Institute Training in Golden, Colorado, sponsored by the FBI.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? We discussed amending this motion, did you decide not to do that, Tim?
I think what we'll do is, is we need to look at that based on all our training, not just this one, because all departments have, have training they go to, and in order to make it fair, we need to discuss that as far as for everybody and not just this one instance. Is that, we've got people going to training all over.
Right.
You know, and there's other officers that get other training too, and I know the water gets training, and everybody gets some training, so we need to discuss that as a, as a complete citywide thing rather than, I know there's already, I believe the police officers have to stay here for a year after their training.
To, after certification. We need to be clear, and that's why, you know, I'm happy to hear it.
It's new office, as I believe.
We need to just back off and discuss that, maybe I'll put it on agenda the next Public Works, if you'd like to come in, or Public Safety.
Missy is who I talked to about this, she brought it up, that this is more than we usually spend, and that was why she thought that it should be addressed in that way.
But it is within budget.
Yeah, it's within his budget, and there's actually another... It's within his budget and there's actually another one that is just as much as not one.
I know, I'm not questioning the amount, just that since it is a large amount, if within a year, this person or whoever goes, if they leave within a year after going to this class, that they would pay that back.
Right. But I think that this is something that we need to discuss for...
So if we approve this, can we then amend it if we amend that policy?
Well, he doesn't go to school till February.
So I'm saying, but I mean, can we then add that to something we've already approved?
He's offered to add that to the Public Safety Agenda for next time?
But I'm saying we're going to approve this without that as part of it.
Well, if the council agrees to it, yes.
Pardon? You could have to sign a fully intense agreement, three versus city.
Okay. If that passes later.
So you'll bring it back to the council? In the next meeting?
Do you have a meeting before the ni-, I don't think you meet before the...
Yeah, they have two.
The Tuesday before, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're back to item H. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Item I, motion to go out for sealed bids for the city's solid waste and possible recycling contract with bid opening date scheduled at 7:15 p.m. during the November 2nd Common Council Meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Make sure everybody understands what we're doing here.
I think we understand it because we're reading something that Nolan has written for us, so I'm not sure if the public understands that.
We have, we had a five-year contract with Kiefer Sanitation. It is completed at the end of this calendar year. So we have the option to go out for new bids for our solid waste disposable within the city. And to do, to go out for bids, we have to have approval of the council and that's what we're asking for tonight, to be able to go out for sealed bids.
According to Nolan, this allows for the responding businesses to provide a quote for both with and without recycling. If the proposals look feasible, if no proposals look feasible, we can renew with Kiefer following our current governing contract.
That's correct.
I think the public needs to hear that, what we're doing.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need to have a, oh, Craig, hold on a second. Opposed? I need to finish.
He has a question.
We're in the middle of a vote.
I'm in the middle of a, well, we didn't see him. He asked for discussion. There's a mic right here, so I didn't see you at the mic. I apologize, I did not see your hand, but I have a majority.
I just have a question.
Okay.
I'll go to your mic, I think they're ready to hear me now.
I have a... Yeah. Those opposed? The motion carried. All right, Craig.
Question I have is, you have possible recycling. And Caroline, you said the businesses have a choice of, for the garbage pickup stuff, they're separate from city hall businesses are.
We didn't do it...
When she said the businesses, she meant the solid waste hauler, the business responding proposal. This is for residential garbage services, recycling services only, would not service businesses and hot springs.
So what, are we going to find more trash things to pick up recycled in town?
No, the RFP states that those providing recycling would provide us the canisters, the containers. We still maintain the solid waste, 96 gallon canisters we currently possess.
And recycled bulls, the people that want recycled pay for their own can? Or the guy picking it up to service the can?
They service the can. Those responding to the request will service the recycling canister.
And is that going to water bills or is that extra on the bill?
Again, this is a request proposal, so any numbers that are being projected, I don't have to give you are the fee structure. But what's being proposed is that it be a citywide recycling program that would, the fee would then be incurred by those participating with that program.
Well, they're going to give us, they're going to give us a price for just the garbage and another price for garbage and recycling.
So like the ones that don't want recycled don't have to have it?
That, we do not know the answer to that question yet. We don't have enough people interested in recycling. It's not feasible for them to provide this additional service to do it. So we have to go through the RFP process first before we can answer those questions.
So how you can ask people to down put on water bill? If they're interested in...
We will discuss the RFP responses in a public forum, ask for public comments.
You see how many people's here tonight? These people should judge.
We will advertise this well in advance. I don't know a better format. We can do a voter initiated referendum for recycling, but we're looking at the, quite a cost for that, the city doesn't initiate.
Probably put on the back of the water bill.
Putting what on the back of the water bill?
Ask the...
We only have so many lines to do. Okay, but if we ask a question to a mailer, we'd have to then provide an envelope of response. What we can do with the water bill certainly is advertise that we're considering recycling. If you'd like to comment on this, please attend the meeting on this date. We open up the sealed base, we not anticipate making a decision that night because we have to go through a very detailed RFP. So once we go through that, we invite the public to come and provide input as well saying, if we offer recycling, is this a reasonable amount you'd expect to pay for it? We have to know answers to questions that we haven't even asked yet. So to first get those answers, we have to ask those questions.
Keep Hot Springs Beautiful did a survey and did ask and they have the numbers and they could not get enough people to sign up for that to do it.
The city has already lost $3 million on recycling. Do you not get it? We built a MRF, Carl, do you not remember this?
All right, just, I understand the frustration.
Talk to the mic and talk, but we're actually, we've already voted on that op, that topic. We have a lot of people very interested in recycling that did come and talk to us, so it's not, it is something that there is public interest for, whether it's a majority, I don't know, but we have to at least ask the question. Or we're not representing everybody.
Have you gotten the numbers from Keep Hot Springs Beautiful?
Yeah.
They solicited people. They tried to get enough people to say they would support that and they could not get enough. Not very long ago.
Couple of years at least. We are only asking and you've given permission for us to go out for sealed bids with and without. And the council will make a decision based on what comes back. That's the bottom line here. All right. Misty's not here, city administrator report?
Actually, she gave me that...
Are you here at all, Karen?
Yeah. So Misty would like to have been here tonight, but she, her son is part of the coronation with the Hot Springs Homecoming Week. So I offered to do the minutes for this week, so I'm hopeful that they are more reflective of the activity we saw tonight. Her report starts off with the 2013 annual report for Hot Springs is now posted to the DLA website. This is our annual audit report. We had a citizen comment, contact us regarding this and reached out to DLA who just posted this on the 15th of September. This information's also available on our own city website as well. A reminder to the council of the upcoming SDML Annual Conference of Watertown, that's October 7th through the 9th. Misty has already made room reservations for Cara, Tim, Andrea and Cindy for the 7th and the 8th, and Mike Close on the 8th. She has directions to the hotel and conference agendas for anybody interested. Those are available at City Hall. And my report, moving on to that, is we have this weekend our third Fitness in the Park and we saw great numbers. This is the first year we've done this. We offer three different classes of bootcamp, fitness, Zumba and yoga. We had over 20 people attend Zumba and yoga last week, which is really awesome for our small community to have that kind of turnout. It's even better when I see visitors to our small town walking the Freedom Trail and seeing how active we are, the new things we're doing. So it definitely leaves a good lasting impression for our community. Our next Fitness in the Park and last Fitness in the Park for September is this Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. The 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. classes that have light yoga is going to be belly dancing. So something new for our community to learn and to experience, so I encourage anybody interested to attend that.
Is that mandatory?
I believe for city staff that will be, yes. It's a non-paid overtime event. The City of Hot Springs Evans Plunge yesterday submitted a grant for a $10,000 funds through the Wellmark Foundation. The intent of this grant is to improve the old spitting room upstairs. Now, this grant has a voting component to it, so the more votes it receives, the better the chances of being funded. Voting begins Wednesday, that's the 23rd, and we will have a link available to vote. I believe you can vote daily on this grant. We'll have a link available on our Facebook page, the Evans Plunge Facebook page. We'll provide it to the Hot Springs Star as well. We'll also have it posted there by the Evans Plunge Swim Tale Counter. And we'll email it out to our Evans Plunge contacts. I think Mary's already out for the evening, but we'll provide it also to Friends of Evans Plunge and the Evans Plunge Membership Newsletter to send out, so we can get lots of people involved voting for our project to help support Evans Plunge. I think at the last Thursday night meeting we were asked, well, what's Evans Plunge doing for grants? This is our first step for grants. We very much appreciate the public support helping us secure these funds. The City of Hot Springs is beginning applications through the USDA Rural Development Initiative to seek possible grant funding for the Brookside and Butler Parks. What the USDA Rural Development Initiative does is it offers both a low interest loan payment, but also grants for things like ADA compliance. Now, this is another one of those instances where we don't know how much funds is available to us if we don't make the application. So our first step is to do the application and then learn from them what grant funds are available and also if they proposed a loan, what our interest rate would be. Any decision on this would have to go through the council for approval. But again, the first step is to apply, to ask and see if we're eligible. We are still in the process of following up with our aquatics director position at Evans Plunge, but currently we're hiring for one full-time position, that's with the water, wastewater departments. It is a water maintenance position. Do we have job descriptions down at City Hall? If you know, if you are interested or know somebody else is interested. We are also actively seeking to hire for part-time lifeguards at Evans Plunge. I cannot advertise this enough, we are looking to hire lifeguards at Evans Plunge at a part-time rate. And lastly, the homecoming parade is this Wednesday at 3:00 p.m. It is not Thursday, it's Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. The parade route begins at the school, goes down Hammond Avenue, locally known as Elsie Hill, and makes its way through downtown ending at Lynn's Dakota Market. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nolan.
What time is it?
Hope side, the parade's at 3 o'clock. It starts.
All right, thank you. I think everything's pretty much been said tonight, so I don't have anything additional.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a brief question in before you vote on the adjournment?
I know we had my motion to adjourn.
Well, you can just postpone it. I noticed, I noticed the executive session for personnel and enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds.
Enterprise funds, does that fall under legal?
Enterprise, it falls under enterprise, which is qualification for executive session.
I thought the only two categories were legal or personnel.
Actually five.
We were discussing...
We were discussing rates and stuff, so that's proprietary information.
There are actually, there are actually five reasons you can go into executive session.
It's been consulted with our city attorney and we've determined, and the city attorney has also determined that this does qualify on executive session privilege.
Can, can you educate me on the five?
The fifth one that we went into executive session for, which, what you're referring to, is discussing marketing or pricing strategies by a board or commission of a business owned by the state or any of its political subdivisions in the city, when public discussion may be harmful to the competitive position of the business.
Cindy, can you give them the number? Is that 121...
It's State Statute 1-25-2, item 5, that I just read off to you.
So, so there are five different reasons that a board can go into executive session?
That is correct.
They're all listed in that State Statute.
Okay, thank you.
1-25-2, State Statute. All right, you want to try again?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See y'all later, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, Krista.